Be surprised, I mean. I usually don't stay out there. Somebody's probably. I go, I don't know if you ever see, I, when I go on my walks around. If you see somebody like walking around and they're like, yeah, that's a special.
I'm about to call to order the October fifteenth regular meeting of the Martins Ferry City Council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the prayer by the clerk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing tonight on this council meeting. Grant our city leaders the wisdom, patience, and understanding to make the best decisions for our city and its people. Amen?
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hunker.
Here.
Mr. Ashman.
Here.
Mrs. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Yezo.
Here.
Reverend Agnew.
Here.
Mr. Schram.
Here.
You should have all received copies of the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, then we'll stand approved as received. Do you have any correspondence? No, I do not. Then we'll move on to reports of officers of the city. We'll start with the mayor. I'd first like to welcome all of our visitors this evening. It's nice to see a large group, even though I know you're not truly here for us. It is nice to see a lot of people in attendance. So, welcome. And the mayor has some special duties that he needs to perform this evening. So, with council's permission, we'll give him the extra time to do that. Mayor, it's up to you.
Thank you, Madam President. You're darned not here to see me. That is a special occasion for us here in the city. Once again, we're going to promote one of our own to the highest rank in our police department. And Mr. West, I was actually, a bunch of years ago, Mr. West appointed me as a street superintendent. Back before, when you was a service director. And then when Mr. West left, I become the service director, safety director. And at that time, I hired Chief West to be a police officer. So, it's kind of a special thing. It's come full circle. Of course, my term's going to end here in a couple of years, and it's going to end in a couple of years. But if I could have the chief come up, please. Just where you're in. I'm the floor. Assistant West is the police chief now. Say how you speak English.
Hi.
What's in West?
I promise the whole Constitution, United States of America, the law of the state of Ohio, the city of Martins Ferry, and the federal duties of police chief, and I mind the rules and regulations of Martin Ferry Police Department to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
Chief, this is your chance to say a few words.
I would just like to thank everyone for their love and support. As you can see, I have a lot of friends here and family that, you know, I hope I just don't let them down, which that's my biggest.
Ain't no way. Go way back, ain't no way.
That's all. I mean, I thank you guys for the opportunity. I, I plan on, you know, I take this town personal. So, to all the past chiefs, Chief Murphy, and all of them. I mean, from Schroeds all the way down, I've known. So, I thank you all. Thank you.
Mayor, you still have the floor?
Moving on, I'm going to keep my speech short because we got a few other things to cover. But the Breda Road project started this week. Andy's been in contact with the foreman up there. We had a little problem with traffic. I think we got that under control, hopefully. We had conversations two days in a row, so I'm pretty, hopefully, we got it. Fortunately, it's only about four or five day job up there on his side. So, that done, we had our cleanup last weekend, seemed to go pretty well, well received in the city. Basically, we're just, we're catching up on potholes, and Andy will fill you in on the water plant and the other things he's been working on. So, other than that, I really have nothing. We're just getting ready for winter. We'll be right, we're in a general maintenance mode right now. We'll go into full swing winter here sooner than I would like to see come, but it's winter in Ohio. It's the way it works. Other than that, Madam President, I have nothing.
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor. Superior Director, Mr. Sutak.
Try to keep it real short there, also, mayor. We do have one thing, working with Jack and the mayor, and I believe council got copies of a note issued for the upgrade, more upgrades to the water plant, just to let council know. Sometimes, once you get into the things, the big things, you still have little, other little options you need to make sure everything is exactly where it needs to be. So, we needed to borrow a little more. We want to make sure that plant is the best ever, brand new, and so on and so forth. We got some other things we want to do to make sure it is done that way. Filter beds, the company is hopefully to come in on October twenty-seventh to start with the filter beds, replacing it and upgrading it and so on and so forth, putting the new bridges in. Hopefully, that nothing changes because they're in another job project. So, sometimes you don't know when they're there, if something comes up that they're hooked behind. So, hopefully, we'll start there to get that done. The ozone equipment is in, or trying to hope that we can get the filter beds moving because I don't want two big companies in, try to fall over each other to get two big, major projects of the water plant done. So, we're trying to get the filter beds moving on and then bring the ozone people in and get the equipment moved. If you ever want to take a look at a high-tech type of equipment and how it's built and what we look at, you know, if you want to look at it, you can give me a call, and we'll go down and look at the, what we purchased with that. It's unbelievable what it looks like compared to the old one. But again, that's technology, that's upgrades and so on and so forth. The mayor hit, that's all for that. The mayor hit on the Breda Road project. They're hoping to get as much as they can get done before the cold weather gets in. They want to get a lot of those trees out in case something happens. And the good thing is, if something happens in the snowfall, rain, or whatever, someone down the road, I don't have to call people out to cut tree off the road, or the tree falling on somebody, or so on and so forth. So, they did clear that out pretty good. I'm sure Mr. Klein's here. He probably went up there and looked at it and seen what they actually did, which was unbelievable. I will say one thing, the equipment they brought in was, was awesome equipment to get those trees cut and put on, in the truck box and taken out. So, we're moving. So, not fast enough, right, Mr. Klein? But we're moving. Yeah, we're moving. So, hopefully, we'll get there quickly. The other project, hopefully, here in the near future, North Ridge and Overlook. We will have the companies, the Geotech people to come in, look and see what needs to be done and so on and so forth. But then again, we're in that bad time of year and so on and so forth. So, things are going to start moving right after the first of the year, when the weather breaks again there. But some things are already being done now to catch up as fast as we can ahead of time. Other than that, and the note issue, I don't have anything else. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer, or whatever they would like.
Questions for Mr. Sutak? We've given you a break, Andy.
Thank you, Madam President.
Auditor, Mr. Regis.
I just got two things. The first is sort of what Christie has that needs approved, that we can proceed on. You have payroll summary, new I report that needs approved. I think that's about all I have. This, I got a message for you from Robert. He says, congratulations. He said, but you and Chad still got one coming for you, so I might lie.
Police Department. Yes, report from the police department.
I passed out forms for you guys. I want to start doing that, just showing our activity and everything. I'm not going to go through all of it. But I'll take a look at that. There's thirty-three juvenile complaints last month. That's a lot. I mean, we're dealing with these kids. So, we're trying to take care of that. It's a work in progress on that, on that sheet and everything, but I do want to keep you informed. So, if you ever have any questions or anything, please come to me. Just ask. I got an open door. Any one of you in Europe, welcome to come in.
When you talk about juvenile complaints, what type of complaint are we dealing with?
Like, for example, they vandalized the World War II monument down, down there. And that's in, that's in the process right now, going through court. We got an estimate on getting it cleaned and holding the families accountable. Other complaints is just, just no supervision, you know? We need, we need parents to be parents. That's it. Other than that, you know, we're, we're looking good. We had a, my officers, we had a break-in over in town, basically a smashing grab. Throw a brick through the window of that new smoke shop over there where the old Z's Jewelry was. Went in, took close to nine thousand dollars worth of stuff. They had a suspect that night. We caught him the next day. Now, we have two confessions and working on another guy. So, that's how quick they were able to do it, just with a couple, couple leads. So, they're really doing a good job, you know? So, I do hope we can all support them in everything that they do.
Where are the, where are the individuals from Martins Ferry?
Two of them were, yes, and they were juveniles. So, that's all I have right now. Any questions?
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. Welcome. Law Director, Mr. Stecker.
No report.
Party Park. Are there any other officers who would like to report? If not, then before we move on to committees, I'd like to offer anyone that didn't intend to stay for the meeting but feels trapped and you can't get out. If there's anyone who did want to leave, I'd give you a couple of minutes.
Hey, make sure you save some food for us, okay? At the party, make sure you save some food for us.
I know. I just figured they couldn't get out in front of between the desks. All right, then, moving on, we'll move on to reports of committees, finance and audit. Mr. Hunker.
No report. I'm sorry.
Street, Mr. Rogers.
No report.
Ordinance, Miss Reverend Agnew.
No report.
Sewer sidewalk, Mr. Ashman.
All right. The only thing that I have, Mr. Stecker emailed me a few weeks ago for the one sewer sidewalk committee meeting we had earlier this year about Mr. Probst's yard. Mr. Stecker, do you have anything updated on that or anything to report? Okay, so I went ahead and gave him those minutes, and I have not heard any updates since.
Safety, Mr. Schram.
All I have is best wishes for you, Vince. Thank you. I know you'll do a good job. Thank you.
Service, Mr. Schram. Real estate building grounds, Mr. Hunker.
No report.
Cemetery, Ms. Yezo.
No report.
Public relations, Mr. Ashman.
Well, it looks like this meeting, I'm going to be doing a lot of the talking. The only thing I wanted to mention of public relations, it's not an official report, but Ms. Yezo, there's going to be a trunk or treat coming up for cannibal behavior, okay? At OUU, I'm on the Education Club, and I think we're going to have a car over there. So, we're still in some planning as far as the, over at the college, but I think we're going to, we're going to have a car and for OUU and the trunk or treat there as well.
Perfect. So, do you want me to tell KBS, is that where you're?
Sure, yeah, sure. Get the word out there, especially, you know, for the kids in the, in the city to come on out there and come for the trunk or treat, because I think it'll be a great opportunity.
So, I'm an add to the PR.
Sure.
Project Forward and in partnership with, since the police were here, Vince technically should make the announcement. The FOP and in partnership with veterans are having a 5K the Friday after Thanksgiving here in town. Nine o'clock, call? Nine o'clock. We even have music for the Martins Ferry Gobble Gala. So, hopefully, all of our esteemed city officials will come and walk, participate, run in the Martins Ferry 5K. All proceeds are going to the veterans and the FOP, correct? Yes. I will play for you after the meeting.
Got some great events coming up.
Is that all, Ms. Yezo?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Utility, Mr. Hunker.
No report.
Code, Reverend Agnew. Income tax, Mrs. Armstrong.
I, I asked the auditor to contact Aldo Delizol and see if he could get us an update on, on revenue. And I was just told there that, he told him that the first, this is the third quarter, and it has doubled. The revenue has doubled from the local company here since last year. So, I feel like we're on the right track with that, and, and hopefully, we can keep all the employees up to date. I thought that was still a good sign.
It is a good sign. Thank you, Mrs. Armstrong. Thank you to both you and to Mr. Regis for pursuing that. Are there any other committees that would like to report? If not, that will take us to hearing of any resident relative to any matter that may properly be brought to the attention of council. If a resident would like to speak, please approach the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and please limit your speaking to the five minutes set aside by council.
Thank you. The name is Richard Hoard, nine fifteen Virginia Street. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Sutak and those responsible. I had brought it up at the last council meeting here about some patchwork I had requested on South Tenth Street, Martins Ferry, and it was done the next day and done very well. And I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Sutak, the mayor, and thank you all, and thank all those responsible for it. Thank you so much. Also, too, haven't heard anything, any update regarding the possible reopening of East Ohio Regional Hospital? Haven't heard anything for a good while, and kind of concerned.
Yeah, I haven't heard any concrete here, or here, bits and pieces of rumors, but I haven't heard any concrete as of from last meeting till now.
Still optimistic?
Trying to be optimistic.
We'll keep our fingers crossed. Any update regarding the situation regarding Austin Masters? Has that pretty much been rectified at this point, or?
Yeah, that's handled by O D N R. They're, they're their own animal to deal with. They're not real, not real good at giving out information. My last conversation with Tara Lee was I can file for a public records request to get the information. So, that's, that's kind of the way that they do business.
I see. Okay. Any update regarding the former Stafalino Chevrolet property? It was going down the last couple of weeks, and there were people working down there, but I haven't seen anybody this week. I'm thinking, maybe they've got everything done, they're all set, or maybe they moved on, so I thought I'd ask to see.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're working on inside over here. They're going to open up here shortly. So, it's just the first step of a few steps, open the whole facility is what I understand. So, at least it's good news.
Can you give us a clue as to who might be coming in?
Oh, Mr. Farmdoms is a family member. So, he will be putting his business in there.
I'll be looking forward to that. Thank you. And also, too, just to mention, Saint Mary's Catholic Church just recently celebrated on October the twelfth, this past Sunday, one hundred and fifty years of service to Martins Ferry in the area. I thought that's very significant, one hundred and fifty years, very historical. So, thank you. And also, I'd like to express gratitude to former Chief Murphy and wish the best to Chief West. I know he's served the city Martins Ferry very, very well to this point. Now, he's going to be the official chief, and I'm sure he'll do an excellent job in that capacity as well. So, really looking forward to it. Thanks to both of them for what they've done for the city, and Chief West, for what he will continue to do for the city. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoard. Are there any other residents that would wish to speak? If not, that will take us down to reading consideration of ordinances, resolutions. I believe we have one this evening. You did receive it within the seventy-two hour space. We will, yeah. We, did everyone get a chance to look it over? So, do you have any, before you go on, do you have any questions that Mr. Sutak can answer? If not, we really do need to get this, assuming council's in agreement, we do need to get this one passed tonight. So, it would take suspension of rules, but not the seventy-two hour rule. We're good on that. Yeah, you can go ahead.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of six million dollars of Water System Improvement Bond Anticipation Notes, Series Twenty Twenty-Five Second Renewal, to renewal notes originally issued to pay part of the cost of and to pay additional costs of water well upgrades, water plant upgrades, pumping station upgrades, and other related costs and improvements, including but not limited to motors, pumps, controls, generators, filtration screens, transfer switches, electric upgrades, computer control systems, heating and dehumidifying systems, contract tank repairs, compressor units, valve repair upgrades, and other waterworks and/or water system permanent improvements, and declaring an emergency.
Council has heard the reading of the lengthy ordinance, would be the pleasure, council. Mr. Rogers?
I made a motion we suspend the rules.
Motion by Mr. Rogers, second by Mr. Hunker, that we suspend the rules. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Yezo.
Yes.
Reverend Agnew.
Yes.
Mr. Schram.
Yes.
Mr. Hunker.
Yes.
Mr. Ashman.
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong.
Yes.
By your action, you suspended the rules for reading the ordinance. What would be the further pleasure of council? Mr. Schram.
Make a motion to pass the ordinance as read.
Motion by Mr. Schram, second by Mr. Ashman, that we pass the ordinance as read. Is there any discussion? If not, when you're ready, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Schram.
Yes.
Mr. Hunker.
Yes.
Mr. Ashman.
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Yezo.
Yes.
Reverend Agnew.
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared passed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for taking care of it for us.
Now, me, Jack worked on it with me a little bit too on a lot of that thing, so I want to thank him also. Moving forward with the three guys at the plant, the other guys, our inside guys, they're going to take up a job working with myself and the engineers and the companies to get this water plant up and running and make it the best it can be.
Well, it's been a big job, and we have been aware of it. We've seen how much that's come across our desks, let alone yours. So, that finishes the legislation as far as I'm aware, so we'll move on to miscellaneous business. Mr. Rogers.
Madam President, what was the amount of the purchase order that the auditor needs passed?
The purchase order is ten thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety cents. And it's to Herbal Electric.
I so make that motion, that we pass ten thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety cents to Herbal Electric.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers that we approve, ten thousand, two hundred and forty-nine, forty dollars, ninety cents.
From the general fund.
General fund, from water, water.
Capital projects.
Capital projects.
Capital projects.
This is for the generator?
Yes. What happened when we had the issue with the theft down there, we had to get Urban there to do some reconfiguration to get some of our power hooked up from, from tower to pump house to tower to pump house. So, it could be, power can be re-hooked up there, okay? Our, so our big project is the generator that was demolished and so on is the next step. But at least all the power's hooked up, and they came in and they did it that night and finished up that morning. So, we didn't have to worry about it to keep the pumps running with one pump that they completely cut and so on and so forth. So, that came in late, right, Jack, that we didn't get a chance to get a purchase order? And we were waiting for the insurance to get reimbursed. And then that's, that's why until we knew they were going to get it reimbursed, we couldn't do a P O. So, that's exactly why. Thank you.
I have a motion by Mr. Rogers. Do I have a second? Second by Reverend Agnew. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote. there any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schram?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Ashman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
And the motion's declared passed. We do have one item under miscellaneous I'd like to, for counsel's consideration. The clerk cannot be here the second meeting of November the 19th, and she's gonna be out that week, so I just need to know what you would like to do about that meeting. I, we do not have, Mr. Regis says kindly.
It's a nice.
Volunteer, I'll say, volunteer.
Oh, if there's no pending business at the time, I'll make a motion to cancel that meeting.
And then reschedule if we need one?
Yes.
And call one. So, I have a motion by Mrs. Armstrong that we cancel the November 19th meeting to be rescheduled in the event that we need one. Do I have a second for that? Second by Mr. Schram. Is there any discussion? Anyone feel, have a problem with that? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schram?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
And Mr. Ashman?
Yes.
And that motion's declared passed. Thank you very much. Mrs. Armstrong?
I just wanted to ask if there's any progress being made toward an ordinance establishing one, how, I'm not sure how we were going to do that, allowing, or allowing just one person to speak on an issue from the public when there's a group here. I'm not hearing multiple. Is there, is there any progress being made on that, or?
Ms. Yeah.
I can answer that question. Yeah, I have done some research, and you cannot, if you are going to allow public speaking, you can't limit it to just one person per topic.
Is there any roundabout way there?
No, not really.
Okay. So, if a group comes in?
If a group comes in and 10 people from the group wanna speak, you have to let them speak. And now, assuming they meet the other requirements, I mean, it has to be related to council business or city business. Technically, they're supposed to be residents of Martin's Ferry. We have typically allowed non-residents to speak if they're talking about.
A Martin's Ferry issue.
But.
Okay. We could.
So, with that thought in mind, can you limit the second, third, fourth, and fifth time?
No. Still have to get to five minutes.
It's the same issue.
Five, okay.
For the ordinance. Now, you don't have to, you can limit the five minutes for everybody, but you can't limit it for, just on a specific topic, just because one person spoke.
Okay. But we could enforce Martin's Ferry residents. That would be, that would be the.
If that isn't our thing, yes.
Okay. All right. We're still under miscellaneous. Mr. Schram?
Make a motion and vote. We received reports of officers and management of the city. Incorporate these reports into the minutes.
I have a motion by Mr. Schram to note that we've received reports of officers and management, second by Mr. Hunker, and to note that these reports will be included in the minutes. Is there any discussion on that?
Oh, okay.
If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's a opposed name, that motion carries. Mr. Ashman?
I, I make a motion we approve the payroll summary, summary statement of cash positions, check report, revenue expense reports.
New hires.
New hires, all of the above.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Ashman that we note that we have received financial reports, including the payroll summary and new hires specifically, and these will also be incorporated in the minutes, second by Mr. Rogers. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's a opposed name, motion carries.
Hey, listen, I just want to think this with counsel, and just where you think of it. It's down here, and I took right down, Andy told me they right down with the water works. It'd be nice if, once it's done, close to time, we get a plaque made and put down to commemorate and guys what they did, 'cause they're, you know, Andy's got the crew down there assigned. They're doing their job plus outside, and when they, they leave their duty water breaks, come back and pick up that job, you know, they do what they have to do, and for what they're doing and what they have undertaken, they should be honored in some way in something up there. Could they put the big plaque up when they go to water works? I think we should put something up when it was upgraded and note, note the dedication they showed, and make sure this went right. That is something if you want to think about, it'd be a great thing to do.
Thank you, Mr. Regis. Mayor, were you going to request?
Yeah, I'd like to have a late session, please. Personnel, you want to talk about the township, too?
Yeah.
And possible litigation, I guess, possible litigation, too, please.
The mayor's requested an executive session for 12122 for personnel.
Over in town.
And possible litigation, two reasons. So, if someone would like to make that, Reverend Agnew? I have a motion by Reverend Agnew, we're going to executive session under high revised code 12122 for personnel and pending litigation. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hunker. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Reverend Agnew?
Yes.
Mr. Schram?
Yes.
Mr. Hunker?
Yes.
Mr. Ashman?
Yes.
Mrs. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Yezzo?
Yes.
And motion carries, and we will now go into executive session. Mayor, is there anyone you want to stay?
Um, no, just all, please. Okay. Okay.